Okay, good evening. I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting close session. The time is 5:30 PM. City Clerk Duarte, will you please call and roll?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Frometa is excused. Councilmember Ortiz...
Present.
Councilmember Pemberton...
Present.
Mayor Protem Sosa...
Present.
And Mayor Trujillo.
Here. Now's the time for public comment. I remind speakers that the public comment period is reserved for comments about the items listed under the regular meeting close session agenda. There's an opportunity later in the evening for general public comment. This is a business meeting and we have business to attend to. In the next hour, each speaker will have three minutes to address the council regarding close session items. I would like to remind members of the audience that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Members of the audience and speakers who violate these rules and cause a disruption will receive a warning and then may be removed from the meeting. Violations of the rules of decorum for council meetings may also result in an administrative fine under the municipal code or citation for a misdemeanor under Penal Code Section 403. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written public comment regarding close session items to be incorporated into the record?
Yes, Mayor. We did receive one public comment from Mr. Lee Squire regarding the city clerk's evaluation and the city clerk being an asset to the city, as well as the staff in the city clerk's office being courteous and patient and assisting all members of the public.
Thank you. I believe we all concur with Mr. Squire's statement. Is there a motion and a second to receive and file written public comment? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Pemberton, second. Ortiz, please vote. Am I on the wrong screen? I'm a yes, but I can't get to the voting screen.
Thank you, Mayor. The motion is approved unanimously.
City Clerk, how many speakers have taken a number?
We don't have any speakers, Mayor.
Motion and a second to close public comment. Motion?
So moved.
Ortiz? Second. Mayor Protem Sosa. So ordered by the mayor. The city council will now recess to close session under the following authorities. Number one, Government Code Section 54956.9 Subsection D, Subsection 1, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Nathan Hernandez versus City of Downey et al., Los Angeles County Superior Court Case Number 23NWCV like Victor 04000. Number two, Government Code Section 54956.9 Subsection D, Subsection 1, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation Roxana Caudillo versus City of Downey, L.A. County Superior Court Case Number 23NWCV01210. Number three, Government Code Section 54957 Employee Appointment of a Fire Chief. Number four, Government Code Section 54957B1 Public Employee Performance and Evaluation of Our City Clerk. Number five, Government Code Section 54957.6A Conference with Labor Negotiator Agency Designated Representative James McQueen, our Director of Human Resources, Unrepresented Employee, City Clerk. We will now recess to a close session. The time is 5:34.
Good evening, we're going to get started if everyone would please take a seat.
Sorry guys.
I will now reconvene the regular council meeting closed session. City Attorney Funk, will you please report the closed section action?
Yes, good evening Mayor, Council and members of the public. In tonight's closed session proceedings, the City Council addressed each of the five matters on the closed session agenda. There is reportable actions in two of the matters. First, in the case entitled Roxanna Cadeo versus the City of Downey, Los Angeles County Superior Court, case number 23NWCB01210. The Council, by a 4-0 vote, Councilmember Fromeda absent, approved a settlement in the amount of $75,000. And for the second reportable action from tonight's proceedings, I will defer to City Manager Bradley.
City Manager Bradley.
Thank you Mayor. Happy to report that I've had an opportunity to interview candidates and have made a selection for our next Fire Chief. Had a chance to discuss that appointment tonight with the City Council and that decision was ratified. And happy to announce that Anthony Hildebrand will be our next Fire Chief. If I may, I'll just read a brief bio and we'll have more information about him coming out shortly. But Anthony started with Downey Fire in 2003 as a firefighter. Throughout the last 21 years, he has promoted through the ranks, currently serving as the Assistant Chief. Anthony holds a Bachelor of Science degree in chemistry from Santa Clara University and a Master of Public Administration degree from the University of Texas. He's currently pursuing the Executive Fire Officer Certification, which is an intensive two-year program that has the pinnacle certification of the United States Fire Administration. And personally, he lives in Marietta with his wife and four sons, so we're happy to have him on our team. Thank you.
Welcome Chief Hildebrand. Congratulations. I will now, well before we begin the regular City Council meeting open session, I have to remind members of the audience that anyone wishing to speak during public comment must obtain a number card from the City Clerk in the back. If you did not obtain a number card and wish to speak, please proceed to the back of the room so you could be issued a card. Lining up during public comment will not be permitted. Each speaker should remain in their seat until their number is called. The time clock will begin when you begin your comments. Per the City's Council Meeting's rules for fire safety regulations, all persons shall remain seated unless addressing the Council or entering or leaving the chamber. Standing in the aisles along the walls is prohibited. There's an overflow seating area in the lobby. I will now call toward the regular council meeting. The time is 6:34. City Clerk Dorte, will you please call the roll?
Yes Mayor. Councilmember Fromeda is excused. Councilmember Ortiz.
Present.
Councilmember Pemberton.
Present.
Mayor Protem Sosa.
Present.
And Mayor Trujillo.
Here. We're going to ask Father Danny Garcia from Our Lady of Perpetual Help Church to come forward and lead us in the vocation. When he's done, please remain standing for the flag salute. Father Garcia, welcome.
It's an honor to be here with all of you today. Let us remember that we're in the presence of God. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, Almighty and ever-living God, we give you thanks for the blessings bestowed upon our beautiful city of Downey. We come before you today to ask for your continued guidance and protection as we install our mayor to lead our community. May your wisdom and grace be upon Mayor Mario Trujillo and his team as they take on the responsibilities of this office. Grant him and them the strength and courage to make decisions that will better the lives of all the citizens of Downey. Inspire him to uphold justice, promote peace, and seek the common good for our city. May he be ever mindful of your commandments to love you above all things and to love our neighbors as ourselves. We pray that under his leadership, Downey will continue to flourish and that your light will shine ever brighter in our community. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Thank you Father Danny. I'll see you Sunday at church. 1:30.
Good evening, we're going to get started if everyone would please take a seat. I will now reconvene the regular council meeting closed session. City Attorney Funk, will you please report the closed section action?
Yes, good evening Mayor, Council and members of the public. In tonight's closed session proceedings, the City Council addressed each of the five matters on the closed session agenda. There is reportable actions in two of the matters. First, in the case entitled Roxana Cadeo versus the City of Downey, Los Angeles County Superior Court, case number 23NWCB01210. The council by a 4-0 vote, council member from Etta absent, approved a settlement in the amount of $75,000. And for the second reportable action from tonight's proceedings, I will defer to City Manager Bradley.
City Manager Bradley.
Thank you Mayor. Happy to report that I've had an opportunity to interview candidates and have made a selection for our next fire chief. Had a chance to discuss that appointment tonight with the City Council and that decision was ratified and happy to announce that Anthony Hildebrand will be our next fire chief. If I may, I'll just read a brief bio and we'll have more information about him coming out shortly, but Anthony started with Downey Fire in 2003 as a firefighter. Throughout the last 21 years, he has promoted through the ranks, currently serving as the Assistant Chief. Anthony holds a Bachelor's Degree, Bachelor of Science degree in chemistry from Santa Clara University and a Master of Public Administration degree from the University of Texas. He's currently pursuing the Executive Fire Officer Certification, which is an intensive two-year program that has the pinnacle certification of the United States Fire Administration. And personally, he lives in Marietta with his wife and four sons, so we're happy to have him on our team. Thank you.
Welcome Chief Hildebrand. Congratulations. I will now, well before we begin the regular City Council meeting open session, I have to remind members of the audience that anyone wishing to speak during public comment must obtain a number card from the city clerk in the back. If you did not obtain a number card and wish to speak, please proceed to the back of the room so you could be issued a card. Lining up during public comment will not be permitted. Each speaker should remain in their seat until their number is called. The time clock will begin when you begin your comments. Per the city's council meetings rules for fire safety regulations, all persons shall remain seated unless addressing the council or entering or leaving the chamber. Standing in the aisles along the walls is prohibited. There's an overflow seating area in the lobby. I will now call to order the regular council meeting. The time is 6:34. City Clerk Duarte, will you please call the roll?
Yes Mayor. Councilmember from Etta is excused. Councilmember Ortiz.
Present.
Councilmember Pemberton.
Present.
Mayor Protem Sosa.
Present.
And Mayor Trujillo.
Here. We're going to ask Father Danny Garcia from Our Lady of Perpetual Help Church to come forward and lead us in the vocation. When he's done, please remain standing for the flag salute. Father Garcia, welcome.
It's an honor to be here with all of you today. Let us remember that we're in the presence of God. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, Almighty and ever living God, we give you thanks for the blessings bestowed upon our beautiful city of Downey. We come before you today to ask for your continued guidance and protection as we install our mayor to lead our community. May your wisdom and grace be upon Mayor Mario Trujillo and his team as they take on the responsibilities of this office. Grant him and them the strength and courage to make decisions that will better the lives of all the citizens of Downey. Inspire him to uphold justice, promote peace, and seek the common good for our city. May he be ever mindful of your commandments to love you above all things and to love our neighbors as ourselves. We pray that under his leadership, Downey will continue to flourish and that your light will shine ever brighter in our community. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you Father Danny. I'll see you Sunday at church. 1:30. And now to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please welcome Boy Scout Pack 805. Please come forward.
Getting younger every year.
So cute.
I know. I love it.
Too cute.
All guys, everyone in, everyone in uniform, do this salute. Everyone else, put your hand over your heart. Ready, again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's give it up for Cub Scout 805. Good job boys.
Good job. Well done. Well done.
Thank you.
I would like to acknowledge former mayors and council members in attendance tonight. Please stand and be recognized. Former, two-time Downey former mayor Mario Guerra. Thank you. I would also like to acknowledge the City of Downey Commissioners, Board Members, and Committee Members that are in attendance tonight. Please stand and be recognized if you're a Commissioner or a Board Member for our great city. Thank you for your service. We also have in the audience several representatives from local legislative offices, elected officials from surrounding cities, and community members. Please stand and be recognized when I call your name first and foremost, our Senator from the 32nd District, Bob Archuleta. Thank you. District Director for Assemblywoman, former Downey Mayor Blanca Pacheco, Ari Ruiz, please stand and be recognized. Our Supervisor for the great 4th District of Los Angeles County, Janice Hahn. And from a neighboring city of Lingwood, the Mayor Rita Soto. That I miss any local electeds. Great. So before we move on to tonight's presentations, we have one special item of business, and that's number one, to adopt a resolution reciting the fact that the general municipal election consolidated with the statewide election held on November 5th of 2024, declaring the results in such matters as provided by law. City Clerk Duarte, I believe you're going to ask us to adopt a resolution number 24-8278, reciting the fact of the general municipal election held on November the 5th, 2024, declaring the results in such other matters as provided by law. So I'm asking, is there a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ortiz, second by Pemberton, please vote. See. I was pushing it, there it is, thank you.
Thank you Mayor. The motion is approved unanimously.
Okay, we will move on to two presentations tonight. The Mayor's Excellence Award to Lisette Rivera, Public Works Commissioner and Community Organizer. Lisette, ¿cómo estás? How are you? Alright, so, can you hear me? Yes. Thank you for being here. So tonight, I've chosen to recognize Lisette Rivera, my Public Works Commissioner, but she's also a Chamber Ambassador, founder of War Against Legal Fentanyl, WOLF, who's also being recognized in a, she's the President and she's what I call a Community Organizer. Most of all, she's a caring mom and a wife, who cares for her city, who's very involved, who has my phone number on speed dial and is constantly asking me to go and look at the problems that she's encountered. And for that, I wanted to recognize you. Lisette's a dynamic leader and advocate dedicated to making a lasting impact in her community. As the founder and President of the War on Lethal Fentanyl, WOLF, she has led awareness and prevention efforts alongside the school district to address the fentanyl crisis, basically saving lives. Her leadership has earned her the recognition of the 2024 Women Achievement for the 30th Senate District and the first place recipient, that must be the 32nd, alright? And the first place recipient of the 2024 Downey Association of Realtors Good Neighbor Grant. With over 25 years of management experiences in nonprofits, SAG-AFTRA, I don't know what you were doing in Hollywood, but, Los Angeles County Public Health, she enhanced her expertise with a Human Resources Management Certification from UCLA, the Anderson School of Management. She's a Public Works Commissioner, a business owner, and an active ambassador for the Downey Chamber of Commerce, as well as a Board Member for the Arc of Los Angeles and Orange Counties. Her involvement extends to key organizations such as the League of Downey, the Assistance League of Downey, excuse me, the Rotary Club of Downey. Her dedication to mental health awareness and early intervention for children with special needs and empowering parents navigating the EIP process and 504 underscores her unwavering commitment to affecting positive change. On the personal note, because I have a son who has special needs and has had a 504 and has an IP, I have turned to Lisette for guidance and expertise in this area and I thank you for helping me navigate through some tough times with my son. But Lisette, I simply hope that we continue to have you around, that you continue to do the work. I want you to know that I see you, I hear you, and I wanted to acknowledge everything you do, and that's why I chose you with this Mayor's Excellence Award.
Good evening everyone. You know, it's always humbling when you hear someone speak so highly of you and to recognize the work that you've done for your beloved city. So today, it's a very special occasion for me, as you can see. I stand before you as a City Commissioner of Public Works for Mayor Mario Trujillo, an Ambassador for the Downey Chamber of Commerce, where I've helped to bring over 25 businesses to the chamber in 18 months. An active member of Rotary, a Board Member of the Arc of Los Angeles and Orange County, a business owner, and I have 12 years of experience as a special needs advocate. Something that it's, you know, heartfelt in a transformative way, because when you're a parent of a child with special needs, there's just a level of difference there because you go beyond caring. You know what that parent's going through and that family. And Mario, thank you for sharing that. I've never so told anybody because I keep quite secret of the people that come to me and seek my services, so that was very humbling, thank you. My 30 years of plus commitment to the LGBT community reflects my deep beliefs in equality and understanding, and that's something that I stand by to this day. Not only as a community member, but as a parent. As a founding member and current President of WOLF, I've had the honor of collaborating with Assemblywoman Blanca Pacheco, Senator Bob Archuleta, Senator Lena Gonzalez, the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health, and 77th Street Community Police Station, our local churches like Desert Rain, and my dear pastor Betty and Charlie Rivera in New Zezen, and the Downey Unified School District under the guidance and full support of Dr. J. Dr. J, if you're here, thank you so much for being, someone who has not only guided us, but given us his full support. Together, we work to raise awareness and provide educational resources about the severe impact of illicit fentanyl and opioids. Every step of this journey has been incredibly rewarding, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve our community and advocate for those in need. Working alongside dedicated individuals who share this mission inspires me every day. Together, we strive to make a meaningful difference in the lives of others, and it is truly a privilege to be part of such a noble work. I do want to take this moment to express my gratitude to Mayor Mario Trujillo for the award itself and the honor to work alongside you. In service in our community, together we've aimed to collaborate for the betterment of our beloved city of Downey. As discussions regarding Onslow Elementary, addressing concerns raised by community members throughout, such as recent issues, issues, excuse me, with the crosswalk and sidewalk of Doty Middle School, creating collaborative efforts between the Chamber of Commerce, City Hall, and my small business to bring an IRS Senior Liaison to educate our community, business community, to the new tax session rules and regulations has been invaluable. I genuinely appreciate your willingness to respond to my texts, my emails, and my phone calls. Your support in this journey has meant so much to me. We can provide our community with the services they so deserve, and I particularly am grateful to you for the full support that you've given WOLF. Once we became a nonprofit, our mayor Mario Trujillo was the first person who wrote us a check. And as a nonprofit and anyone that has done any type of fundraising, you know how challenging it is, especially when it's campaign season. During his campaign, he said, Lisette, stop by my house, I have a check for you. I couldn't be happier because again, that shows the level of commitment, not only that he serves me as his Commissioner, but to the city throughout. I am truly humble and deeply honored to receive this award tonight. As I stand here, I can't help but think of the incredible friends, teams, colleagues, and mentors who have supported me throughout my journey. This recognition belongs to every one of you. Thank you for your unwavering belief in me, your collaborative spirit, and your countless hours dedicated to achieving our goal, to my family. Your love and encouragement has been, I'm sorry, the foundation of everything that I do. Excuse me. I will always be a mother first. This award is a testament of the power of hard work, passion, and the amazing people that surround me every day. Thank you from the bottom of my heart.
A little fart, a little fart.
Oh, okay.
So before we call my colleagues for pictures and the family, I want to recognize WOLF.
Oh, this is my team.
This nonprofit, let's get the Board Members down for WOLF. Please come forward. Look at that, bow tie and everything.
Come on.
So yours, yours.
Oh, thank you.
So a little bit about WOLF. Please come forward. The War on Lethal Fentanyl, as you may have heard, there is a poison in our streets that's become more prevalent over the last five years, if you will. It's a orderless substance, usually in the form of a pill, very inexpensive and accessible to our kids. We have lost children to fentanyl. So I wanted to recognize the work that you're doing because I truly believe you're saving lives. This nonprofit organization, WOLF, brings together collective voices to raise awareness about the dangers of fentanyl. They promote prevention efforts and provide crucial education services to families and community members. As proud parents, devoted grandparents, and community members who are passionate about our city, they are united by a shared purpose to combat the fentanyl epidemic impacting our nation and our cities and our neighborhoods. Through advocacy, education, and raising their voices, they empower individuals with the knowledge and resources necessary to combat this growing crisis and protect our loved ones. Striving to make a difference and safeguard our communities from this dangerous threat, they are known as WOLF. They are impactful, they are persuasive, because they're doing the right thing, so please consider supporting WOLF with a check. And I simply want to thank you for doing the work. This was very innovative. I love that this is in Downey, no other city has, at least around here that we know of yet, has an organization like this. You do serve a model. I tell council members about you so they can consider this and come to you hopefully for advice. So thank you, and I want to recognize WOLF with this certificate. In recognition of all your efforts, basically, I'm going to summarize it, saving lives. I can't say any more than that. I wanted to thank you and recognize you with the Mayor's Excellence Award. So you guys can hold this one. Does anyone want to speak on behalf of WOLF?
Richard.
Say a few words.
Okay. Come on.
I want to thank everyone for coming out here tonight and acknowledging us. It's been a great two years of coming together and getting the word out there. We're a diverse group of people from the community, and we look forward and would love to have other people join us. Please think about it, we have a website, and check us out.
Alright. Picture please.
Okay, all together?
WOLF, everybody all together? Lisette, your family, Lisette's family, please come forward, take a picture with the council. Thank you. Congratulations. Alright, here we are. Is that alone?
One more, one more, one more.
Alright, thank you. The next item of business is the administration of oath office and presentation of certificates of election to newly elected council members. We will start with District 1, Oracio Ortiz. City Clerk Duarte, please administer the oath of office to Oracio Ortiz in District 1. Administering the oath of office tonight to Councilmember Ortiz is our State Senator Bob Archuleta.
Ladies and gentlemen, and Mr. Mayor and City Council, I'm honored to be here because today we're kind of making a little bit of history, where a young man approached me some time back and said, Senator, how can I possibly serve my beautiful city of Downey? And I said, number one, you get out there to the parks, you introduce yourself to the business owners, you get to know the City Council Members, get to meet the sheriff, the Chief of Police, the firefighters, everyone, and let them know you're ready to jump in and serve your beautiful city. And I said, the first thing you've got to do is work your way into becoming a Commissioner. And to my surprise, he became your Commissioner, and then of course, the next question was, what do I do next? I said, do you jump in and you run? That's what you do. Because the City of Downey would love to-
Set your family, the sub-station, please come forward. Take a picture with the council. The next item of business is the administration of oath office and presentation of certificates of election to newly elected council members. We will start with District One, Oracio Ortiz. City Clerk Duarte, please administer the oath of office to Oracio Ortiz in District One. Administering the oath of office tonight to Councilmember Ortiz is our State Senator Bob Archuleta.
Ladies and gentlemen, and Mr. Mayor and City Council, I'm honored to be here because today we're kind of making a little bit of history, where a young man approached me some time back and said, "Senator, how can I possibly serve my beautiful city of Downey?" And I said, "Number one, you get out there to the parks. You introduce yourself to the business owners. You get to know the city council members, get to meet the sheriff, the chief of police, the firefighters, everyone, and let them know you're ready to jump in and serve your beautiful city." And I said, "The first thing you've got to do is work your way into becoming a commissioner." And to my surprise, he became your commissioner. And then, of course, the next question was, "What do I do next?" I said, "Do you jump in and you run? That's what you do because the city of Downey would love to have you." So here you are. You've completed your election, and we're also very proud of you, and I'm glad you have your family. So now, let's begin the oath of office. And place your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand, and please state your name. I...
I, Oracio Ortiz.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support...
That I will support.
And defend...
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear...
And that I will bear.
True faith and allegiance...
True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
I take this obligation freely...
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will...
And I will.
Well and faithfully...
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, council member.
Thank you so much.
Can we give a round of applause to my niece and nephew? They were so nervous. Good evening, Downey. First, I want to start by saying, Giselle and Ezekiel, I want you to know that Nino loves you, and I'm so proud of you both. Amá pa. My brother, where is he? I get emotional because family is a big part of my life. And los quiero un chingo. I also want to say thank you to Senator Bob Archuleta for being part of this special moment for me and always giving me good advice. Hopefully, I dressed well today, right? Class A. They always give me something because I never wear a tie, but today's a special occasion, so. Tonight, I stand before you with great appreciation and humbleness to serve as your councilman for the next four years. Thank you so much. It was just a year ago when my colleague Dorothy and I, aka the Dynamic Duo, or the Batman and Robin of council. But Dorothy, we never really figured out who's Batman and who's Robin, right? We'll figure that out. We'll figure that out later. We both came into office where we promised that we were going to come in boots on the ground. I campaigned on four major issues: public safety and having more proactive code enforcement, supporting small businesses, improving the quality of life of all the residents, and addressing homelessness. And look what we accomplished in one year. Helped pass Measure D, which will enhance our police and fire departments to improve public safety. Hired additional code enforcement officers to maintain pride in our community. Hired a third-party security company to patrol our parks and downtown. This also frees up our police officers so they can focus on keeping our residents safe. Started 15 neighborhood watch groups in my district. Helped welcome many new businesses in our city, from Silver Lake Ramen, Sprouts, Sephora, and Round One, and many more that we still haven't announced, but we're excited to announce. Passed an ordinance to reduce tobacco shops located near our children. Started the process to add a dog park at Golden Park. A $50,000 streetlight program. Expanded an existing ordinance to require the vacant and abandoned properties to properly be maintained. Contributed $1 million towards the Downey YMCA. Finally hired a homeless solutions manager and have a one-year contract with CityNet for homeless outreach. And many more things that we have accomplished. But this shows how hard we're working to deliver for our community. I have so much excitement for what's to come, just for the next years, because I have the privilege to work with all these amazing individuals behind me. One issue I want to promise our residents, and hopefully with the support of my council colleagues, I want to address our infrastructure for pedestrian experiences, from the issues of speeding, walkability, mobility, planning, parking enforcement, and technology. We need to do more, and I know we can. Downey's growing, and we need to ensure we do whatever we can to keep our streets not only safe, but also enjoyable to walk. And I still have not given up on a substation for our police department. We'll get there. Lastly, I will not be here without the hard work of all the staff that helped execute my mission and vision, as well as that of our council. So I want to give a huge shout out to the staff who have given a lot of time of their day to help me with my vision. So if you can, give them a round of applause. Nothing's achieved by one individual. No level of success is reached by one person alone. You have to surround yourself with people that will support and embrace your vision. So to the staff, I want to thank you for always being there for us and helping us achieve our goals. And thank you so much. I appreciate you all. It has been my greatest honor to serve Downey this last year, even if I have lost some hair, like Hector Sosa warned. I don't know if you noticed from up there. I lost a little bit right here. Now, council colleagues, let's continue on this great momentum we have going on, and let's continue to serve our great city united. Let's continue to make our home, our Downey, a proud place to live, work, and play. Thank you, Downey.
Thank you. City Clerk Duarte, please administer the oath of office to Dorothy Pemberton in District Three.
I would like to call forward Greg Welch to administer the oath of office to Councilmember Pemberton.
I'm going to give you another scoop. Thank you. And I haven't seen my daughters yet. All right. It's truly an honor on behalf of the police department to be the chaplain for this fine city, and especially to administer the oath for this fine person, Dorothy Pemberton. In what could be considered a rather lively conversation in the Book of Matthew, the apostles were arguing one night about who among them would be the greatest. And Jesus said to them, "The greatest amongst you will be a servant." God knows Dorothy's heart. He knows that she's a servant in all she does for the city, on behalf of her family, her friends, the community activities that she's very much a part of. And then, in Paul's Book of Colossians, in the third chapter, it says, "Whatever you do in your life, do for the Lord." And my interpretation of that is, you can be a butcher, a baker, or a candlestick maker, or a city councilperson. Being a servant and serving God is the highest calling. And this young lady does that just a fine job. So let us begin. Right hand up. I state your name.
I, Dorothy Pemberton.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
Close enough. Congratulations.
You know, last night, I attended the Artesia Mayor Transition, and the person giving the oath had doubled the length of the sentences. And many times, they had to stop. So thank you. That was perfect.
So, good evening, family and friends and fellow residents. Just last year, I stood here as the new District Three City Councilmember, and I was thankful for your support and vote. I again am thankful for your support and vote, but it's even more meaningful because I won the election with over 6,600 votes. That's almost 70% of the vote. I am grateful and humbled to be reelected by you. Downey has been my home my entire life, and I love this city. I bring my knowledge and passion to this position. There were those that said I couldn't win for certain reasons. I've always said I could represent every diverse community by listening to residents with their concerns, taking action, and genuinely concerned and caring about my community. We all want the same thing, no matter our heritage, our ethnicity, our socioeconomic background. We want a safe, clean, and prosperous community. I personally walked and door-knocked practically every day starting from Labor Day because I felt voters needed to meet me face to face. I have many thank yous. First and foremost, I put my faith and trust in God. There were times I was unsure about many things, but I know He had and still has a plan for me. I look forward to seeing what that is. I'd like to thank my daughters for coming out here. They endured the freeways, and it's special to see your kids when they're older because you don't see them so often. Next, I'd like... No successful campaign is without a successful support team. And I certainly had one, starting with my incredible campaign manager, Hans Fritz. That's your daddy right there. Yep, he's really good. He kept everything and everyone on track. And thanks to my core campaigners, as we like to call each other the divas, with Bonnie and Monica, Vicky, Trish, Gail, Dania, Cheryl, Dee, Terry, and Carrie. These ladies walked, knocked, organized, called, and gave such support that any candidate hopes for. Any candidate hopes for. Thank you, ladies. Also, a shout out to my phone bankers, Teresa, Amanda, Lupita, Violet, Julie, Cynthia, Kat, and others. As they say, it does take a village. Thank you to my colleagues for their support and to some of our former mayors as well. My mentor, past District Three Councilmember and favorite former mayor Rick Rodriguez, was always there for any questions, as well as Alex, Mario, and Kirk. And I'd like to thank my commissioners, Sue, Mia, Juan, Rebecca, Elias, for giving your time this past year attending meetings and keeping a watchful eye over the city. A lot of volunteers are on committees here in our city. I and my other colleagues can't get things done on our own and make ourselves look good. Now, my partner in crime, I'm going to sound like you. We have a team called City Staff. These are the miracle workers that respond to our many requests, from our excellent city manager Roger Bradley and Assistant City Manager Banya de Rojas, to our city attorney John Funk, Public Works Director Matthew, Director of Community Development Irma, and others at City Hall. Thank you for the many requests I have asked of your departments, especially with code enforcement and graffiti removal. You always respond to many of everyone's requests. Thank you. Police Chief Lochner, thank you as well for being responsive to my requests, which also come from residents. Dispatch and parking enforcement have received many calls from me this past year, and I know they know me on a first-name basis. Lastly, I'd also like to thank our Council Secretary Rebecca for always keeping me and our council organized and on top for everything that we need to do. Our city clerk Alicia, along with Augustine, have a very big job, always preparing the council meetings, staying late, and other things behind-the-scenes tasks. Thank you as well for your efficiency and patience with all the technical aspects of our government. I hope you can tell that we have the best city staff and employees. City Hall is a family, and I truly appreciate all of you. So what did I do this past year? Thank you, everyone. What did I do this past year? I know that I needed to have results to win your confidence for the next four years. So I worked diligently and nonstop. Some of my accomplishments were: speed humps on Guatemala, lights on bluff, traffic calming measures on highly-traffic streets with radar detectors, towing of abandoned cars, dirty old cars, cleaning up trash, reporting graffiti. I had a tough decision regarding a housing project, but in the end, I voted based on what the residents wanted. I will always stand behind the residents as you elected me to represent you. I prefer to be called a public servant and not a politician. Downey has many veterans, and we proudly thank them for their service and continue to remember them. I moved to have Downey registered as a Purple Heart Medal City, which we are now. A plaque has been added to the Vietnam Memorial on the sun dial at City Hall that does identify what it represents: the soldiers that died in service from the Vietnam War. And lastly, we are moving forward to bring the Vietnam Wall to Downey next year. I also responded to all the emails that residents sent and answered all calls. A lot of times, they pick up the phone and is, "Are you really the councilwoman?" Yes, that's what you want to hear. And this is what I expect from my elected official. I want to be responsive to my residents. All residents want a good quality of life. I look forward to improving this for everyone for the next four years with the help of my council colleagues. Some upcoming projects include: the new space shuttle exhibit at the Columbia Memorial Space Center, building a new dog park at Golden Park and a new community garden at Rio San Gabriel. We all know that... Oh, did I miss a page? Wait, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, we're good. We all know that there is a pet epidemic with overpopulation of animals from unwanted pets resulting in overcrowding of shelters. I heard a county shelter is at 151% capacity. I will work to try and develop low- or no-cost spain and neutering for cats for residents. This is the best way to combat overpopulation of animals that end up in shelters and usually are euthanized. I want to work on getting more pets adopted from Siaka. Coming to our town is also some great buildings. Round One Arcade is a great family-friendly building that is coming to Stonewood and where the Old Sears is. And for some of you long-timers, it's Broadway. It's an indoor... See, you knew. It's an indoor arcade and a sports complex. The new YMCA will be under construction next year and plans to be open in 2026. Thank you for coming out. And then, with the voter-approved Measure D, we will have funds to improve and enhance public safety, namely our police department and first responders. One area I'm looking forward to is hiring more officers for our city. We will have the report next month. So there's a lot on my plate, and I look forward to seeing results to get this done again. I thank all of you for re-electing me to represent you these next four years. I promise to make a difference in our city because I know I already have. And as I like to say, Dorothy gets things done. Thank you.
I would like to invite Mayor Trujillo forward for the oath of office. The oath of office will be administered by Supervisor Janice Hahn.
Thank you. Good evening, Downey. I'm Los Angeles County Supervisor Janice Hahn, and I'm so honored to be here tonight to administer the oath of office for our fabulous mayor from the Fifth District, Mr. Mario Trujillo. And I also want to congratulate councilmembers Dorothy Pemberton and Oracio Ortiz as well. The voters of Downey have seen the work that you three have done on their behalf and have chosen to send you back to this council. You know, for me, Mario has been one of the most active, tireless, outspoken champions, not only for this wonderful city of Downey and its residents, but for his beloved LGBTQ community all across Los Angeles County. I was here in June when Mario joined me to raise our Progress Pride Flag at one of our eight-county buildings here for Pride Month. And he made history as Downey's first LGBTQ mayor. And earlier this year, when we made history by opening the first-ever dedicated LGBTQ center in the Whittier area, I wanted to honor the trail that Mario has blazed. So when you visit the Greater Whittier LGBTQ Center, you'll find a room named in his honor. It's a way of recognizing the immense contributions of a true public servant here in Downey. Few people know Downey like Mario does, and he has governed with the best interests of his city in mind. He helped bolster the ranks of the Downey Police Department to ensure that Downey remains a safe place to raise a family. And he helped to create an environment where businesses, big and small, can thrive, ensuring that Downey remains a destination and a hub of economic activity for the region. Mario understands what the families of Downey want from their local leaders, and he has had the vision to deliver it. That's why they chose him once again in a landslide. I look forward to continuing the partnership that I have with the mayor and council members here in Downey and want to say that I am so honored that I can call Mario a friend, and I hope he feels the same way about me. And now, I will administer the oath of office. Okay, that's good. Okay, please raise your right hand and put the other one on the Bible. Okay, I—state your name.
I, Mario Trujillo.
Do solemnly affirm—
Do solemnly affirm—
—that I will support and defend—
That I will support and defend—
—the Constitution of the United States—
The Constitution of the United States.
—and the Constitution of the State of California—
And the Constitution of the State of California.
—against all enemies—
Against all enemies.
—foreign and domestic—
Foreign and domestic.
—and that I will bear true faith and allegiance—
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance—
—to the Constitution of the United States—
To the Constitution of the United States.
—and the Constitution of the State of California—
And the Constitution of the State of California.
—that I take this obligation freely—
That I take this obligation freely—
—without any mental reservation—
Without any mental reservation.
—or purpose of evasion—
Or purpose of evasion.
—and that I will well and faithfully—
And that I will well and faithfully—
—discharge the duties—
Discharge the duties.
—upon which I'm about to enter—
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And God bless you. And I have something I want to give you here. We're the county. You know, this is on behalf of the 10 million residents of the County of Los Angeles. We all tonight congratulate Mario Trujillo upon the swearing-in of your office, and we extend congratulations and well wishes on this momentous occasion, and thank you for selecting me to give you the oath of office.
Thank you.
Let's take a picture.
I see you actually have other big certificates for Oracio and for Dorothy. You get one too. It's right there. Thank you. I almost did not run again. Let me tell you, this journey of being a politician is not an easy one. As many of you know, I'm semi-retired after a great career with the government, with the District Attorney's Office, and being an educator before that. I have 30 years of public service under my belt, and I thought, that was it. I was gonna retire and just travel. The position became open, and I was encouraged to run, and I did so. I had thought about running when I was younger, but just being a public servant, when you're on the government clock, nine to five, it's difficult to go out and play a politician. And I say "play" because you're not paid. This is a volunteer position. I think it's very important that people understand that all of us are volunteers. Although, I do want to look into parity for this council. Other cities are increasing the stipends that council members get, so one of the things that I'm gonna do is make sure that future councils get paid for the time—or compensated for the time that they give to the city. One of the things that I intend to do in the next term. On Thursday, I'll get an opportunity to speak about all the accomplishments. You're all invited back to the chambers on Thursday, on which day we will swear in our new mayor. Being mayor is sort of ceremonial, but it is a big responsibility because you're always the first one to get called. So, I wish the next mayor much luck, and I'm sure the next mayor is gonna be fantastic. I have a good idea of who it is. And let me tell you about my colleagues, some of the hardest-working people. And we may not agree all the time, and you know we don't. It's been all over the news about certain things that happened with the pride flag, and we remained civil about it. We continue to agree to disagree, even though I clearly disagreed. And I'm also making a commitment to work on bringing the pride flag back to the city. And if you want to know why—and thank you to Hans for being our advisor. For my campaign, there were other issues that we had to deal with that my colleagues didn't, and that was the issue of my sexuality, something that took me years to come to term with. If you still believe that choosing your sexuality is a choice, I disagree with you. We are born the way we are born, and God loves us the way we are. And when I made a commitment to protect everyone, you have to think about those who are most vulnerable in this country. We hear, "When the fire in the ship breaks out, women and children first." You hear about those things, how we prioritize communities that are vulnerable. If you wonder why—and one of the reasons why I ran again is because of what happened with the pride flag. I think that was a mistake, and let me tell you why. Why am I making a big deal out over my sexuality? Why were we all over the news about the pride flag? Well, Father Garcia says something in his invocation, which, for me, affirms the fact that perhaps I was meant to do this for another term, that perhaps it is a calling. He said, "May God grant this council the decision to better the lives of all residents in Downey." You want to know why that pride flag was important? Because children are literally dying because of who they choose to love. I have yet to hear about a child who was bullied at school because they were straight. Listen to that. Do you know of a child that was bullied at school because they were straight? How about a child who was kicked out of their home because they were straight? Can you name one? One child who was kicked out of their home because they were straight by their own loving parents? Have you heard about the teen suicide rate amongst LGBT youth? 41% of LGBT youth tonight will consider taking their lives because of who they choose to love. Have you heard of a child who was killed because they were straight? I could name two. Gabriel Fernandez and Anthony Olivo. Because of who their parents perceived that they were going to be gay, tortured. That is why I do this. That is why I speak up. And I know, Downey, that you're conservative. You have 53 churches and 12.5 square miles, but I still go to church because my God loves me just like anybody else. So, when you say that the most important thing elected officials are supposed to do is protect the community, it's not hard to understand, I hope, why I believe that flag is important. Because it tells kids that in Downey, you're accepted regardless of who you choose to love. It's a vulnerable population that's at risk because of certain narratives that are being transported across this country, vilified, and that's wrong. We're here. We're queer. We're not going anywhere. We're in your families. What a shame. 53 churches. We're a city of faith. Well, my faith tells me that I was supposed to be here, and that's why I ran. I'm gonna fight to correct the wrongs that I think happened during this past term. I agree with Dorothy. I don't necessarily like being a politician, and I just leave with the heart. Honestly, that's my guiding light. I say true to myself. I don't need your money. I don't plan on running for higher office. Thank you for still voting me in with 65%. I appreciate that, Downey, because that tells me that you saw that our work here is not in vain. I promised you safety, and that's what you got. We are still one of the safest cities in the southeast, if not entire, LA County, and we're gonna continue to increase the number of officers. I want to thank the chief for being proactive and telling our officers that we want to see more of them. When they take their breaks and they're at the donut shop, stereotypical, I just feel safer when I see police officers around, and I know you do too, and I know that's important to you, and you're gonna get that. Yes. You're going to continue to get the top services that you deserve. Because while I think it's great that we have reserves, that's for future generations. I'm here, I'm alive now, and I think I deserve services now, the best services that we can give to people. I always tell people, "When you go to the restaurants, do you tip? If you get good service, you do." Well, in Downey, we're not asking you to tip. We're just asking you to pay your taxes, and you do. You chose to tax yourself, and that says a lot about you, Downey, because you want officers, and you're gonna get them because you're willing to tax yourselves, and you deserve them. My promise to you is that we are going to continue to protect you and your families, your property, to make sure that your property values are safe, that your school district is still one of the best ones in the area, because that's what you deserve, and that's what I signed up to do. So, even though I may not work for you, my commitment is that I am here to provide a service, because that's what I've done. Public service, I like it. It makes me feel good. To those who much is given, much is expected. The good Lord has been good to me, so let me tell you, I'm gonna continue to give back, community service, and volunteer for this position. Thank you for having me for another four years. I appreciate it. And now, we're gonna recess, have some hors d'oeuvres or some appetizers. Thank you very much, everyone. Una foto, una foto, yeah? Dorothy.
We will now reconvene the city council meeting, the time is eight o'clock. Now is the time for city council member announcements, request of future agenda items, and conference meeting report. We'll start with Councilwoman Dorothy Pemberton.
Well, let me defer to my, I appreciate, let me defer to my colleagues so they can say a few things first, and I'll pick up anything.
Sure. Councilmember Ortiz?
Well, I was waiting for Dorothy, but I just want to wish everybody happy Christmas and Happy New Years. I'm very excited for these next four years working with my council colleagues. We accomplish a lot in one year, and I'm excited what we can accomplish the next four years, so thank you so much.
Mayor Protem Sosa?
Thank you, Mayor Trujillo. It's good to see everyone here tonight. Well, there's a few of you left. Congratulations again to my colleagues, Dorothy Pemberton, Mayor Trujillo, and Madashi Ortiz on your reelections. You know, Madashi had a very tough campaign to run.
Yeah.
I'll keep my, yeah, thanks. I'll keep my comments short. I attended a couple of board meetings, Siaka and Sanitation District Meeting. That was an exciting meeting. Nothing to report, and we've gone on quite a few holiday celebrations throughout the city. I can, I can name a few here. I'll be here all day, but I'll leave that up to Dorothy. I did participate in the Holiday Caravan last night, the first day. It was my wife and I, we joined Santa Claus. That was pretty cool. It was really cold, but it was pretty cool to go around. A lot of happy, smiling faces around the city of Downey. And I guess my, all my, the rest of my colleagues will be there next Monday. So, check, oh, there you go. Yeah, check the, check Day Two, which is December 16th. Monday starts City Hall and goes through a variety of areas, a lot through District Two and District Three. And if you have a chance to see Santa go by and my colleagues, it's, it's a pretty cool treat. So, with that said, thank you for being here, and I'll pass it back to Mayor Trujillo.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilwoman Pemberton?
Thank you. So, good evening to those remaining here, but those listening out on social media. December, December is Wreaths Across America Day. It's a program to remember our veterans, honor their families, and teach our children. Our Downey Cemetery will hold a wreath lane event next Saturday, December 14th, at 10:00 a.m. If you would like to sponsor a wreath for $17, go to wreathsacrossamerica.org, or attend the event at our Downey Cemetery located at Lakewood and Gardendale. And I went online to that website, and easily to just put a $17 donation, goes straight to our cemetery. We're up to only half, 149 wreaths have been purchased so far. We attended, I attended with my Mayor Protem colleague here, the Norwalk Grand Opening for the Veterans Villas. It's 60 affordable units for all veterans. It's been 10 years in the making, and they partnered with Mercy Hospital, Mercy Housing. They offer one, two, and three-bedroom units, with one-third going to the homeless vets only. It's a beautiful complex, so thank you, Norwalk. It's located on San Antonio, off of Firestone. They are accepting applications. If you know a veteran that needs housing, call 562-564-5962. Then, the Downey Police held their annual 5K run at 5:00 a.m. in the streets of Downey to honor fallen Officer Ricky Galvez. Mayor Protem here was one of those participating and a runner. It was on November 18th, 2015, that Officer Galvez was killed in a botched robbery here in the parking lot. Officer Galvez, a former Marine, served two tours of duty in Iraq. He was a five-year veteran of the Police Department. We thank all our men and women in the department, as well as other organizations, for continuing to remember Ricky with various events throughout the year. We attended ribbon-cutting for St. Louis Resource Services. This is for families and individuals needing pathways to navigate for available resources for healthcare, social services, and other areas of need. They're located right on Lakewood and Cherokee. The parade was on Sunday, December 1st, and we had a huge attendance. Thank you to the Downey Chamber of Commerce, as well as Downey Collective for putting that together. Everyone had a special car. We shared a Jeep, or Bronco, or whatever that was. And for another parade, this was another spectacular parade, our 73rd. The tree lighting ceremony on December 2nd was at City Hall, and the Columbia Space Center had their capsule lighting. Thank you for Public Works and Park and Rec for always giving us such a great display and the work that goes behind it. As she's talked about Santa's first caravan, and next Monday will be the second. The Mayor Prayer Breakfast, our own former mayor, Rick Rodriguez, was the guest speaker. We had a ribbon-cutting for Sprouts. I was leaving that for you, Sprouts, your district. We had a Sprouts cutting at 6:30 a.m. It's going to be a beautiful store. It is a beautiful store, and it's really well-received by the residents. And on Saturday, we have our first double-decker bus tour on the 17th. It sold out quickly. We added two more different tours. I think that sold out quickly as well. We have a historical tour in the morning, three buses, and in the evening, it's the city lights. Our Public Works and Rec, as I mentioned, worked triple-time in December with all the holiday events. The parade, the tree lighting, they were spectacular. And so, a big shout-out and thank you to Jason, his staff, Matt, your staff with the Public Works, and everyone. We really appreciate it and notice. And Chief Hurlock, thank you. Thank you for being our chief, for being involved for so many years, 24 years? 24 years. It's going to be his last meeting as he's retiring, so we give a round of applause. And with that, I am going to wish you Merry Christmas. I'm also going to say, Siaka is between December 6th and January 6th. They are offering cats, dogs, rabbits, a one-day past the available date, for just $25. Go and visit Siaka and see if you can offer your home and give a home and adopt a pet. It'll make a world of difference. Thank you again.
Mary, if I may, really quick, just to give a little information, there are two new businesses that are going to open in our city. Cafe 12, which is going to be opening, if I'm not mistaken, December 12th. Please check them out. That is in the promenade, as well as Shake Shack, which is finally opening up on December 19th, so if anybody wants to come check out.
Okay. Couple of agenda items I would like to request. I was contacted by MAD, Mothers Against Strang driving. I know it's short, but Friday they were asking that we, and other cities are doing this, that we light up City Hall in red in recognition of the lives lost to drivers under the influence. I don't know if it's feasible for us to do anything this late in the game, but of course, I would need approval from my council members. So, I was thinking if perhaps we could make some sort of motion, saying if the city can do something by Friday to try to participate in this?
My question is, what's the feasibility of that?
I think at this point, we'd like to, it's a little too soon for us to decide that. We appreciate the importance of that event, but we probably need to look at the consequences of that.
Maybe next year, we can prepare ahead of time for illuminate MAD, something they're asking us to do. I did tell the representative it was short notice, but I would make the request. Thank you to, to staff, especially the Police Department. We are officially launching the Pulse of Life, which I believe is going to save lives. The Pulse of Life is an item that will be given to victims of domestic violence. There's a criteria that they have to meet. We don't want to show the items, that you won't see the items, so that people don't know what it looks like, but isn't, it's an alternative way for victims to contact our Police Department without having to pick up the phone. Very often perpetrators, statistically, if they're going to reoffend with the same victim, will do so in the first 60 days. We'll be issuing these objects called the Pulse of Life to the victims, and one in every four victims, by the way, is a male, so that we can try to arrive sooner to the location. If they push this button on this item, it sends a signal to our Police Department. We already have on file who the victim is, because we assigned them the Pulse of Life, and we know who the possible perpetrator is. They don't have to say anything. Police officers respond and hopefully save lives. So, I'm very thankful to the Pulse of Life continues to show our priority when it comes to public safety. Along the same lines, I would like for us to look into the tracking bracelets for seniors, particularly those with Alzheimer's, maybe dementia. There's been many cases where our loved ones experiencing Alzheimer's walk away, and you'll see the reports missing. There are now tracking bracelets that we can offer families for their loved ones. Should they go missing, we can track them. So, I would like them to look at the possibility of adopting these tracking bracelets and making them part of the services we provide to our Police Department. Can I get a second on the tracking bracelet?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Hoping to get an update from city staff on what has happened with permanent outdoor patios throughout the city. Since the pandemic, when we started having all these outdoor patios, there's been a lot of discussion about adopting this new way of dining, if you will, outdoors, sort of like the Europeans do. So, I'd like to see if the people applied for permanent patios. How many of all the businesses, and what are we doing to approve or not approve these patios, some sort of report?
Happy to provide a report, Mary. We do have several that have applied for permanent outdoor dining areas. We do have a few that are in a, what I'd say, a limbo space, because we actually did say that temporary outdoor spaces are, are no longer permitted, and so we're waiting for a few folks to actually put in applications for that. But we'll be happy to provide a report and let you know where we're at.
Yeah. Just for our council to consider whether we want to adopt this way of dining, and that's supporting outdoor patios. So, we'll get that. And lastly, thank you, Chief Hurlock. Fortunately, I have plans. I will not be there, or going away, but on behalf of myself and my family, I want to thank you for your years of dedicated service to the city. It was an honor to work with you. I found you to be highly effective and professional at all times, and for your service, I thank you, sir. And that concludes my comments. I will now turn it over to City Manager for his or staff member comments.
Thank you, Mary. Just a couple of things I wanted to report on. We hired CityNet a couple of months ago, and their first full month of work was in October. Just wanted to provide some information about the work that they've been doing for the month of October, and we get monthly reports. This one is, again, from October, for the first full month. They, they met with approximately 130 clients in the city, which meaning they were out with homeless populations that are in the community. 65 of those were unduplicated interactions, so they were meeting with some people multiple times. 20 of those folks expressed interest in services, and we're working with them to get them into services. CityNet conducted daily visits to key hotspots around Downey, such as the roadway, the railroads, I'm sorry, freeway underpasses, the riverbeds, parks, and various shopping centers. Through those interactions, provided 45 requests for supportive services, including transportation to medical facilities, places to banks, treatment, county offices, and locations, so that they can continue to seek services and hopefully look at mechanisms to get off the, off the streets and not into housing. Of the 20 individuals that were interested in services, 10 have begun the process to become document-ready, which is a key step in, in getting permanent housing. A document-ready involves obtaining necessary identification, such as a social security card, birth certificate, and identification. These documents help expedite enrollment in programs, obtaining government benefits, such as CalFresh, Social Security Disability, or other potentially veterans' benefits. So, overall, in the first month of service here in the city, CityNet has connected one individual to a shelter, one individual to substance abuse, substance use treatment, and reconnected another individual to their family, ending their homeless experience. So, getting the program up and running, things are coming together, and we are having some impact here in the community with these programs. And again, we're engaging the, are the individuals in our community to help them into services and out of homelessness. And lastly, I just wanted to say, I won't say a little too much, because he has a retirement ceremony coming up in a couple of days. I don't get to say a lot more there, but just want to say thank you to the chief, Chief Hurlock, for his service the past couple of years. Wish him well. This is, this is his last meeting this tonight, and hopefully he has a good time here at this last party with us. And wish him well again in his, his future adventures. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. I will now take public comment on agenda consent calendar and non-agenda items. If you did not receive a number card in which to speak, please proceed to the back of the room to be issued a card for comment period. But before we proceed to that, I do want to acknowledge that present, we have Ari Reese from the Assemblywoman's office, and he was kind enough to present some certificates during the break to the three new council members. So, thank you, Mr. Reese. Also, I want to acknowledge the presence of Lingwood Mayor Rita Soto and Councilmember Luis Cuellar, who are still present. They also presented certificates to the incoming council members, and we want to thank our neighboring city of Lingwood for being here. Thank you. So, before we begin the public comment period, I would like to remind members of the audience that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Copies of the meeting rules are located in the back of the chambers. Members of the audience who receive one warning may be removed from the meeting for further violations of the rules, and it could also result in an administrative fine pursuant to Municipal Code or citation for a misdemeanor under Penal Code Section 403. We acknowledge the right of the public to address issues that are within the city's jurisdiction, and we invite you to comment. However, that must be balanced with the need of the city to conduct public business in a fair and efficient manner that's free from any disruption or disturbance. We expect everyone who participates in today's meeting from members of the council here on the dais, or dais, to staff, to the members of the public in attendance, to do so with respect and dignity. Please refrain from using profanity or name-calling in a way that disrupts this meeting. That includes yelling, whistling, booing, screaming, any other outbursts, or any conduct that interferes or disrupts with persons who are addressing the council. Any conduct that interferes or disrupts with council members while they're speaking. Any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Attacks of a personal nature on city staff or council members that have no connection, connection to agenda items or non-agenda items. I remind you that your speak, your comments must be addressed to me directly and not to any member of our staff or council. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written public comment to be incorporated into the record?
Yes, Mayor, we did. We had one written public comment submitted in regards, or in favor of a five council district
Members of the audience who receive one warning may be removed from the meeting for further violations of the rules, and it could also result in an administrative fine pursuant to municipal code or citation for a misdemeanor under Penal Code Section 403. We acknowledge the right of the public to address issues that are within the city's jurisdiction, and we invite you to comment. However, that must be balanced with the need of the city to conduct public business in a fair and efficient manner that's free from any disruption or disturbance. We expect everyone who participates in today's meeting, from members of the council here on the dais or dais, to staff, to the members of the public and attendance, to do so with respect and dignity. Please refrain from using profanity or name-calling in a way that disrupts this meeting. That includes yelling, whistling, booing, screaming, any other outbursts, or any conduct that interferes or disrupts with persons who are addressing the council. Any conduct that interferes or disrupts with council members while they're speaking. Any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Attacks of a personal nature on city staff or council members that have no connection to agenda items or non-agenda items. I remind you that your comments must be addressed to me directly and not to any member of our staff or council. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written public comment to be incorporated into the record?
Yes, Mayor, we did. We had one written public comment submitted in regards, or in favor of a five council district, let's say it's voting, but it's of having a five council district in the city. And then a one written comment regarding Siaka and resolving the issue of overpopulation of cats, one written comment requesting a crossing guard at Unsworth Elementary, and one written comment disputing a parking citation.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second to receive and file written public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Pemberton, second by Ortiz. Please vote.
The motion is approved unanimously.
How many speakers have taken a number, city clerk?
We have a total of eight, Mayor.
Okay, based on that, I'm going to allow a three-minute comment period. I remind all speakers, you must remain seated until your number is called, but please anticipate that if you are the next number, you should be ready to speak. Speaker number one, please come forward.
Lee Squire, Vietnam veteran, son nephew, World War II nephew of Korea. First Amendment freedoms is what I exercise now, Mayor and city council. Congratulations to President-elect Trump and Vice President Vance. I pray that you bring back honor to the Purple Heart Medal and to the Thin Blue Line flag of our law enforcement across every state and county and local government. Congratulations to LADA Hockman and good riddance to Gascon. Congratulations to Dorothy Pemberton and for all of your efforts and honor to all of the veterans from World War II to Iraq and Afghanistan. Congratulations to council members Ortiz and Trujillo on your reelection. God bless the nation of Israel. God bless the nation of America. God bless military veterans and your families, and God bless law enforcement and your families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Squire. Speaker number two, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. My name is Paul Vallejo, and I'm here representing the Wall Las Memorias, a nonprofit organization that serves the LGBTQ+ and Latino communities throughout LA County. We're standing on the precipice of a new uncertain chapter in our nation's history. As we await a new year, the LGBTQ+ community is under attack by a new incoming federal administration that has promised to undo a lot of the hard-fought progress, that has promised to go after perceived enemies, and is scapegoating transgender and queer people to divide our nation, and will be working to target vulnerable populations across our country. So I ask, what will you do? There are many people that will be negatively affected by the defunding of essential programs aimed at stopping the spread of HIV and AIDS, aimed at stopping support for folks suffering from substance abuse and those that are homeless. Others will be affected by the reversal of legal protections that most of us take for granted. Some folks are here because they've had to escape homophobic and transphobic countries to find a better and safer home. For some, it is a matter of literal life and death if they are deported. So I ask again, what will you do? Will you allow local law enforcement to coordinate with federal agencies to deport entire families, including children born in the U.S., or to separate families? Or will you work to make Downey a safe city for folks who have come to this area from far away and haven't broken any laws? And what will happen if asylum and refugee protections are rescinded? Will you show indifference, or will you stand in solidarity with our fellow Americans who are being unfairly targeted? The city of Downey has many ways in which it can prepare for the incoming attacks on our civil rights, especially those most vulnerable among us. The city should also work to have more resources be made available to young LGBTQ youth and transitional-age young adults to work for a more inclusive and equitable place to live and work in. I can guarantee that we all have at least one person in our lives who is likely to be affected by what may happen over the next four years and beyond. I hope you don't wait until it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vallejo. Speaker number three.
My name is Paul Martinez, and I'm here as a concerned Angelino. Tonight, I'd like to speak about the importance of HIV prevention for the LGBTQ+ community here in Downey and the surrounding cities. As you may know, despite the many advances in medicine and education, HIV continues to disproportionately affect vulnerable populations in Southern California. Though there are currently some services addressing HIV prevention, more can be done. HIV infection rates have not gone down despite the current efforts, and the LGBTQ+ community faces a higher risk of contracting HIV. Gay and bisexual men, as well as transgender individuals, are particularly at risk, with gay men being 28 times more likely to contract HIV than heterosexual men, and transgender women 14 times more likely than other women. This is not to say that this is exclusive to the LGBT+ community. Due to stigma, the fear of medical discrimination, and limited access to resources, many people from all walks of life continue to contract HIV, and we continue to see deaths from AIDS-related complications to this day. I urge the city to think proactively and also to collaborate with more organizations and community members. They are critical partners in helping to provide access to testing, counseling, and support for LGBTQ individuals. Though LA County has some testing and resources in nearby cities, more can be done here to educate young folks and the public about PrEP, free testing, and low-cost or free SCI treatments. I urge the city council and mayor to push for more comprehensive education and inclusive healthcare. We can work towards reducing new infections across all communities. HIV does not discriminate, and neither should Downey in prevention efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Speaker number four.
I need my eyeballs.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tina Perez. I am here to advocate for my son Fabian Martinez, who lost his life to a drunk driver July 14, 2024, on a Sunday at 9:25 PM. You are invited to the Southern California Office, Mothers Against Drunk Driving, MAD, along with the local office, law enforcement, and drunk and drugged driving victims, who will host a press conference followed by a candlelight vigil to kick off the holiday season on Friday, December 13, 2024, in the city of Los Angeles. Please join us as we honor and remember, in solidarity, all the victims whose lives have been lost and forever changed by this 100% preventable crime. Los Angeles City Hall, ALAX, Pylons, Union Station, US Bank Tower, City of Glendale, and City Temple will be illuminated in MAD's red colors in honor and memory of impaired victims. In addition, MAD California is inviting families and community partners to join us by illuminating a special place or home or a place of business in red to honor and remember victims of drunk driving and drug driving. The following people will be there in attendance. Patricia from MAD's California State Executive Director, DA Nathan Hume, Los Angeles District Attorney's Office. Haiti Feinstein, Los Angeles City's Attorney Office. Chief McDonald, Los Angeles Police Department. Chief Chris, probably going to butcher this, Margins, California Highway Patrol, Southern California Division. Councilmember Bob Blumerfield, Los Angeles Council, District 3. Colin Campbell and Gail Lender, MAD victim volunteers. It is Friday, December 13 at 4:00 PM. They're going to have a guest speaker, media arrival, 4:30 PM to 5:30, press conference and vigil, 6:00 to 7:00 PM a vigil, where, again, at the Los Angeles City Hall. It's located on First Street between North Main Street and Spring Street in Los Angeles, California LAPD headquarters. Victims and survivor photographs. You may bring victim and survivor photographs, and MAD is also requesting that families attend to bring photos of victims and survivors. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number five, please come forward.
Good evening. First and foremost, my condolences and prayers to that mother. God knows what she must be going through, so prayers to you and your family. I want to talk a little bit about Measure D and thank the council. I see that we are hiring eight police officers, so to the city manager, you kept your word, and I appreciate that. So one thing I do notice is that there's only $773,000 being allocated from Measure D, so maybe we could have done this before and not necessarily had to increase the taxes. So I'm excited. I'm very excited that we're hiring more officers, and I'm excited because there are at least $5 million on the table to spend more on law enforcement and fire and other things to keep our city safe. Now, moving on, Mayor, I'm calling you by name, Mario, only because I have the privilege of doing so. Thank you so much for always giving me the opportunity to disagree and agree in great conversation and debate. You've always been able to compromise and see value in having healthy discussions, and I appreciate you. I really do. I appreciate you because you're very passionate, even when we disagree, but that makes for a better city. Mayor Sosa, or Mayor Proten Sosa, congratulations, and I wish you nothing but success because, again, it's that God guides you and the rest of the council. We're living in troubled times. The world's a mess right now, but it's so soothing to know that Downey is not in a mess, that we don't have those problems that we're currently facing as a nation and that we're facing in the world. To the police, to the fire, to all the first responders, thank you so much. I pray to God for each of you to have a very safe 2025. To all the city staff, thank you for working. Chakom. We're talking about some business for next year, so I love it. It's a beautiful time, beautiful, beautiful time to be in the city of Downey, and it only works because of our ability to disagree, because when we disagree, we come up with better solutions for the city of Downey. So again, I'm wishing all of you a blessed 2025, that you are guided, that you are level-headed, that you are safe, and that you continue to work with us, residents, to make Downey the best city, to continue to make Downey the best city in Southeast LA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valle. Speaker number six.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Waters II. I'm a Downey resident and a parent of a first grader at Unsworth Elementary. We urgently need the council's support to address safety issues at our school's crosswalks. Despite Unsworth being located at T-Junction, where three roads meet, only one has a stop sign. Distracted drivers, combined with cars regularly parking in and blocking the crosswalks, creates dangerous conditions for our children during drop-offs and pickups. I urge the council to help us make these crossings safer by installing additional stop signs and appointing a crossing guard. Adding two stop signs would require traffic from every direction to stop. A crossing guard would not only ensure that drivers stop, but also provide ample space for pedestrians to cross, directing traffic flow, and removing the guest work during peak hours. Having a cross guard during peak hours would significantly enhance safety for both pedestrians and drivers. I don't know if you've been there before, but going to drop off is kind of like looking to 405 at peak time, which is gridlock, and it's tough for everybody because people park right there, and you can't see, drivers can't see around the corners, you can't see pedestrians, you can't see other cars. It's just really a mess, and God only knows what the worst will happen. So we desperately need something before that happens. So thank you so much for being with me in this time and opportunity to your attention. Really truly appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Speaker number seven, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Bradley and staff, good evening. First of all, I want to wish all of you a healthy and a happy and a blessed New Year. Two brief comments, one having to do with the recent election, and the second comment has to do with a suggestion. On the recent election, Mr. Hockman is now the new county district attorney, and I think the majority of people that voted for him on that particular day preferred to have criminals under lock and key instead of having their deodorant under lock and key. Just a minor comment. With regards to a suggestion, we are in troubled times now, and we need more love in this world. And what I would suggest, that all of us contact someone, surprise someone, and tell them we love them. Now, I love everybody in this room, except for one or two. End of my comments.
Speaker number eight.
Good evening, Ms. Farina. Good evening. I have two comments tonight. First, thank you to council member Pemberton for expressing your commitment to helping with the problem with animal control in our city, and the importance of spay and neuter, and importance of our city to get on board with providing low-cost or no-cost spay and neuter so that we can all get together on this. I was late today because I was feeding my cat colony. I feed 25 cats every single day, rain or shine, out of my own pocket. I get some people donating sometimes and some help sometimes, but it's mostly me. I don't expect everyone to do that. It's something I feel like I've been called to. It's a strength I have of kind of like an animal whisper. So for anyone who's passing judgment already, you should know that I have spent the last two and a half years capturing each one and spaying, neutering, vaccinating, and treating them for parasites, and then releasing them where I found them, and then caring for them. A few of them, I don't want to say the number, are at my house now that I have adopted them from my colony. So yeah, I just wanted to stress the personal responsibility that everyone has. You can't expect the government or the animal control organizations to solve these problems. We have to work together. So I'm hoping that anyone listening out there, if you find a dog or a cat in your neighborhood that's just been around for days, you don't know whose it is, talk to your neighbors, find out whose it is. If it doesn't belong to anybody, then band together and reach out to organizations or people like me who help, that are experts in trapping animals, and we can help connect you to someone that could, you know, help with the spaying and neutering, and then we're going to put the animal back where we found it because we know if we take it to Siaka or to other organizations, not blaming the people who work there, but it's just the way it is, the animal might not make it. So the best thing we can do is just release them where you found them. My second comment has to do with what I've been coming to council meetings about almost all year, about the war on the people of Palestine. So speaking of personal responsibility, I'm speaking again to anyone out there who doesn't know what to do and they wish that they could help in some way, know that you have power yourself, your voice is important, and where you spend your money is important. So if you could look up a website, it's called BDSmovement.net. Find them on Instagram, it's called BDS.Movement. They list the companies that are profiting from this war slash genocide, and those are our enemies. Our enemies are the ones who profit off of endless war. The people are not, the hate that are amongst these people, like, that's manufactured. It's like, we can go into the history, but I'm not going to, but we know people are profiting. We need to stop people from profiting. So boycott companies like Chevron, Amazon, Disney, Google, if you can, and do your part. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farina. I believe that's our last speaker. Is there a motion and a second to close public comment?
So moved.
Second.
So ordered by the mayor. Now's the time for consent calendar items. Are there any council members that would like to remove or abstain from an item? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I move to accept the consent calendar.
All second.
All those, let's vote.
The motion is approved unanimously.
There are four administrative reports this evening. Number 17, Columbia Memorial Space Center, second building expansion update, that the city council receive and file a presentation on the status updated That the city council receive and file a presentation on the status updated of the Columbia Memorial Space Center, second building expansion. City manager Bradley, is there a staff report for item number 17?
Yes, Mayor, Ben DeCao, director of the Columbia Memorial Space Center, will provide the report today.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
And council. Thanks. I'm going to undo my jacket. Thank you. All right. Well, let's get started. Well, thank you. Thank you very much for having me up here. I want to give everyone just an update on kind of where we are and where the project stands. To do that, I want to start out by just orienting us to the project itself. We're here to inspire the future unlimited, our motto, the city of Downey's motto. And it follows with our mission, right? We're trying to ignite communities of critical and creative thinkers. And we think that the expansion project is going to help us do that. Today, you know, the Space Center has become a regional draw. It's become really a leader in Southern California STEM education and also a destination for people to come to. We see about 100,000 people. We engage with about 100,000 people a year. 45,000 of those or more are students on field trips and other very student-focused programming. We also do, of course, at City of STEM and some of the other events and things like that, we see a lot more kids. But those are the programs that are really focused on kids, are more than 45,000 kids a year. We, you know, with all of this activity, with all the things that are going on, we've noticed that we are selling out all of our programs, from summer camp programs to our parents' night out. We're selling out within hours and we can't expand anymore. So we're responding to that need by building a new building. That's kind of what we're here for. So back in 2019, we got a phone call from Christina Garcia's office, assemblywoman at the time, who was able to work with the state of California and get us a seed money of $5.8 million. And that got this whole process started. This project was there to solve a few problems that we've had at the, not problems, but challenges that we've had because of our growth over the past few years. Like I said, program capacity cannot meet the demands or the program capacity demands can't be met with the current space, the current facility that we have. We had very limited options on renting to medium-sized gatherings. We had very, we have very little room to highlight historic artifacts. We have a fantastic collection of Southern California aerospace history, including the first space shuttle ever built. And we can't put it on display. We needed a place for it. Also, we need to continue with that mission of increasing representation in STEM fields for all of the kids in Southeast LA and especially in Downey. So with that original $5.8 million allocation from the state of California, the city of Downey decided that we are going to build the expansion building and rehab the space shuttle. It's going to provide additional programming space so we don't have to turn away kids when we're doing summer camp programs or other things. Turn away as many. There's always going to be a capacity. It will create a space that will handle 250 to 300 people in a meeting. That's a rare commodity in Southeast LA. We get requests all the time for those sizes and we have to turn away those potential rentals. Now we're going to be building a space that allows that to happen. We'll be able to put the Space Shuttle Inspiration on permanent display and let people be in it and experience it. It also provides a community Instagram moment. It's a monumental building. It's got a great curb appeal. And then it also has allowed us to create a master plan for our little part of Downey. So this is what tomorrow is going to be. It's the Space Center building there in the front, the current one, and then the large Inspiration building to the back and a completely redesigned campus. And the idea is that we're creating a new living room for Southeast LA, a place where people can come and gather and spend the day, go back and forth to the promenade, hang out outside, and just have a wonderful experience. So overall of that, that was kind of the preliminary. I just wanted to get everybody back on the same page. We developed these project components for the project. The Space Center master plan, which I just showed, that's already been completed. There's a new building involved. We have the restoration and display of the Space Shuttle Inspiration, new exhibits, campus improvements, and we need to update our current building because it was built 15 years ago and soon we'll have a state-of-the-art building and we can't have those two things occupying the same space. So current status of the project, I hope you all remember this day. Okay, that's a good reaction. So with the second building expansion, we finalized the architectural drawing, or they're near completion. The steel structure engineering is near completion. We've ordered the steel structure. Steel will be manufactured really soon, so we're going to be the proud owners of a lot of metal. And our exhibit experience process is started. So that means basically the exhibit design process. Of course, with the spatial inspiration, we've started that off. We have a temporary building on Bellflower Boulevard. We've unwrapped the shuttle after about 15 years of being sort of mothballed. We moved the shuttle to the temporary structure and we had our first really big media event around this project that you were all a part of, and thank you for being there that day. I didn't crash the golf cart. I want it noted. So here's where the rubber hits the road. So all of those here, let's go back to here. All those project components, we went back and we put a number to, right? And that came up, that's how we were able to come up with our capital campaign. Capital campaigns are pretty standard and nonprofit. It's your way of sort of fundraising for large projects, whether it's a building or, you know, I don't know if you read the news, but if you're a museum geek, you saw that the best preserved stegosaurus fossil just went up for auction for $25 million. So that would be a capital campaign. We didn't get it, by the way. So the building is clocking in around $28 million. The restoration of the shuttle project, that's about four, and that includes the experience inside, new exhibits, campus improvements, and update the current building. That's a total of a $45 million capital campaign, which in the context of other campaigns going on in Los Angeles is pretty modest. The California Science Center is in a $400 million campaign right now for their space shuttle project. We broke that campaign down into phases. We're not going to bite, you eat an elephant piece by piece. You don't eat the whole thing all at once. So we're really focused on phase one, which is the building and the shuttle. Those have to go together because the shuttle's so big, it has to kind of be, you've kind of finished the building around the shuttle. So phase one is the first part. Then we're going to get to exhibits and campus improvements. And then at the very end, we'll kind of focus back on our legacy building. And this is kind of where we're at right now as far as the fundraising goes. Through that original state grant, another state grant that we were able to get in 2023, a million-dollar earmark from Congress, we were able to kind of start the project and get things off the ground. And at this point, I want to throw the microphone to our city manager to talk about the city's part of this.
Thank you, Ben. I think we have some pretty, pretty good news. One of the things that we've been working on the past year is making sure that we can come up with some additional funding for this project. Back in 2021, the federal government gave each city ARPA money, American Rescue Plan Act money. We got about a little under $15 million. That money was placed in the water fund. There were other options to use that fund, the money for. And one of the things we've been working on over the past few months is to use it for what originally the main purpose was, was for general fund revenue replacement. And so we've been working with the federal government to take that money, which is now in the water fund. It has a timeframe of use for 2026 and to basically make it for use for anything we want to use it for rather than a water purpose. And we are now able to allocate, we're recommending $10 million to be allocated to this project to bring it well over 80% funded at that point and allow us to continue to proceed with bidding this project and getting an actual building built for us. So we're pretty happy to report that. Additionally, some of that money will be allocated to some of our road paving projects. But the bulk of the $10 million we're recommending, bring it into this project so that we can see this project move forward.
Thank you. And thank you, city council. And question?
Oh, sorry. Just wondering, do you need a motion for that?
Not tonight. We'll actually bring a formal action when we do the bidding of the project. So just right now, it's informational. Council will have a opportunity to take a formal action on that, probably in January, February, I think. We're doing our bidding, so.
Sounds good.
Please continue.
Sounds good. So yeah, like city manager said, that brings the phase one up to 80% funded, which is great. We also received in 2021 allocation from Senator Archuleta's office, $800,000 for the space shuttle project. And a lot of that went to the temporary structure and the move and everything that we experienced in October. So that brings phase one up to about $24 million, which is, you know, very close to the end of phase one. But that's not the end, right? That's not the entire $45 million capital campaign. So the rest of it is going to fall on these three big buckets. Individual donors, corporate sponsors, and foundations. This is kind of the bread and butter of the fundraising world, right? You meet somebody who is a high-worth individual and go out and fundraise that way. That's going to fall to the Space Center Foundation primarily. The Space Center has a private 501(c)(3) foundation set up for fundraising purposes that are attached to the city. And so the foundation board and I will have been and will continue to go out and sort of beat the bushes. Of course, another bucket is additional government funding or grants that will primarily fall on myself and staff and then the city also through connections with federal government, state government. And at the end is community funding. Those are things like adopt a space shuttle tile, things like that. That is very much falls on staff and then community volunteers. So all of that together gets us to the goal, the campaign goal, over the next few years. And just to let you know what we've been up to since the last time I was up here. To get to that campaign goal, we've, the foundation has paid for a campaign consultant to kind of get us a strategic plan that I'm going to go into in a little bit. The foundation also paid for a marketing consultant to be able to market the campaign itself. She was the one who was very instrumental in getting all that media here on October 17th when we moved the shuttle. Of course, we had that big media announcement, so now the world knows that we're in this fundraising phase and they know about the project. We recruited another board member. We've developed donor lists, which is really just a hit list of people that we are going to talk to. We've applied for grants. We have a campaign website that's developed, which I'll show you in a little bit. We are in the process of getting new images, new renderings of the building that are very active and show some of the exhibit experience in it, which is going to be critical to sell the project. And then the strategic fundraising plan, which I'll get into. So here we go. I'm going to make this quick. So plan objectives. One, we want to raise additional funds to complete the capital campaign. We've got, that's the first thing, is to get that capital campaign done. Then we want to be able to create an annual giving program, which I'll get into in a little bit. Of course, we need to get to that by increasing the frequency of our major gifts, and major gifts are $250,000-plus gifts. And then we want to recruit new board members. Objective one, complete the current campaign. It's even a more multi-step process than the six I'm going to put in here, but we're going to hire a development consultant. That's going to be somebody who will be spending, unlike the campaign, which was just to sort of lay out the roadmap, this person is going to be somebody who's actually going to be assisting me, writing grants, keeping track of donors, all that kind of stuff. We're going to focus on regional and national prospects. It's very important that we understand that we're a regional draw, but because we're the Columbia Memorial Space Center, we're a national memorial. So that allows us to go out across the country and interact with high net worth individuals and corporations that are not just based here in Southern California. Continue to develop grants and pursue government resources. Create a series of donor events leveraging the shuttle. Now that we have the shuttle inside a space, we can start having donor parties in there and things like that once we get the power on. But yes, very soon. We're going to acquire and install a CRM system to better track our fundraising. And then we're going to publish this donor website. I'm going to show you guys screenshots of the website because it's not live. It's behind a firewall right now. But this is the campaign website. This is the splash page. And if you notice those orange circles with the pluses, if you click on one of those, for example, that one, you'll get to explore the ground floor. That includes Inspiration Hall and the classrooms. If you click on that, you see a floor plan of the building. And each one of those sections has a price tag. So you'll see Inspiration Hall. If somebody wants to sponsor the entire interior of the new building, it's a $5 million ask, and then they will get their name recognized, things like that. This is a website platform that's used by major hospital foundations and others to be able to get donors to kind of see what they're donating. And then you can get a little bit more information about the site. This will go live in early 2025. We want to give, want to do a little preview of it before it goes, before it's ready for primetime. But yeah, that's one of the steps in the fundraising campaign. Objective two is to create an annual giving program. So this is implemented after or near the completion of the capital campaign, and this is going to allow us to have funds coming in. The idea of this capital campaign, we realized early that it's not just to build a new building or to restore a space shuttle, but this becomes the beginning of a real fundraising program that'll last throughout the life of the Space Center. This is a fantastically catalyzing moment for the fundraising and the support, this long-term support of the center. This is going to get attention of donors. We convert those donors that are going to donate to the big project. They're on our mailing list, and then we can convert them into annual donors and support it way past the project deadline. We'll be able to develop a planned giving program. This is basically, if you're putting together your will and your trust, you could put the Space Center in it and so that funds come in at a later date, so to speak. And then part of this is we're going to identify Space Center programs that are ripe for annual giving. So these are our tent pole programs that are always around, that are super popular, and that we just will be able to get people to contribute to year after year. And finally, objectives three and four, they really go to kind of, they're really there to kind of uplift the basic things that we have to do to get objective one and two completed, which are, we're going to implement it next year. We're going to complete compelling donor marketing. So we're going to put a complete donor package together with the new images. And then again, expand the reach of this campaign to regional and national individuals. That'll allow us to get more board members involved. And our goal is to get six new board members on the foundation board, which will basically double it by the end of next year. So at this time next year. Quick next steps, just in the next six months, Q25. We're going to finalize those marketing materials. We're going to publish that website I just showed you. We're going to begin the donor events, again, highlighting the shuttle. Onboard that development consultant. And then a little bit later on, the next six months in Q225, we'll continue the board member recruitment, target relevant grant opportunities, secure a major gift by June, and then leverage the City of STEM, which is coming up in April, as a donor prospecting event also. We do get a lot of fundraising interest for City of STEM, so we want to transfer those donors into campaign donors if possible. And that is my updates.
Thank you. Any members of council have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Ben. That was a really good presentation.
Thanks.
Very thorough. Thanks.
Thank you.
I like the website. I like the interactive where you can have the naming rights, working with the YMCA. That's always a plus. They want to support it, but at the same time leave a legacy. And so hopefully there's like lower levels, of course, if you just don't have that $5 million.
They're not all that.
Of course. And I really like the donor events, bringing people on site. You know, I wasn't too aware of what was going on until we physically saw that. And to get everybody on board, it is very exciting to see what this could be because it is so unique. And having that national recognition will help to get more donations as well. So I hope we will really get that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one question. Through that transfer that we moved the shuttle from one place to another, and you know, it was national news, if you were there, was there any interest of people trying to do donations or anything during that time?
We've gotten a few inquiries of people who want to know more. They're, I don't, I was hoping, of course, but no one was going to give us a call and say, hey, I saw you on TV. Here's $30 million. But that starts, well, yeah, I know one person. But that starts a conversation. We've had two individuals reach out to say, hey, we'd like to meet with you in the new year and see how that goes. So these are ongoing conversations. I've been doing meetings up and down 10 LA at some of the family foundations who also were aware of that and kind of see how that plays out. Also, I just want to say on that, too, that is not the only media event around the shuttle. Partially because of the attention it got, we know that we're going to start highlighting almost every aspect of this project. So, you know, when the lights come on, we'll do a press release. When we, you know, clean up one part of it, we'll do a press release. Just leverage that as much as possible. as much as possible.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Just a comment, Mr. Dick, I really think there's an opportunity with the private aerospace defense industry.
Absolutely.
As we know, the federal budget, a big chunk of it goes to these corporations that are in the South Bay. Hopefully, when your development consultant comes on board, they can get together with our federal lobbyists, our recent federal lobbyists that we brought on board, to see how strategically we could go after the Boeings of the world, that I'm sure have good marketing money, that they can use to buy goodwill. So please consider going to aerospace industry companies that I understand have good money. Thank you for the presentation.
You got it.
If our, there are no more any, if no more comments or questions, I will now entertain a motion and a second to receive and file the presentation.
So moved. Second.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 18, additional police department patrol staff budget allocations. That the city council allocate an additional eight full-time sworn officers to the city's patrol staffing levels to be paid for by the newly passed Measure D revenues. And number two, increase appropriations by $773,033 in the general fund, Measure D operating fund account number 12-4-2120 for the additional police officers. City Bradley, City Manager Bradley, is there a staff report for item number 18?
Yes, Mayor, I'll go ahead and take this item. We've been working on a assessment of the police department for the past several months. That report is forthcoming. We expect to have that final report here in January. However, we do have one section that has been, already been completed, and that's this, the section about our patrol staff. The consultant that we hired looked at the activity, and I'll use the word of somewhat the free time, the time that our, our staff have, available to them to be proactive, to go out on their own, when they're not responding a call, to be visible within the community. They looked at that to see, is there enough time available to our staff to be out there in the community and do those unscheduled types of checks throughout the community, at schools, and other places? They found that we have about 34% of our staff's time available to that. Based on their recommendation, the industry standard is about 45%. And in order to get up to that threshold, so that we have more staff out doing more unscheduled types of checks out the community, they're recommending an additional eight police officers. There was a question earlier about the $773,000. I will say that's only for the remainder of the fiscal year. That's only, that is, there's only six months left in the year, so that's where that money, the value is coming from. It's actually closer to 1.6, 1.5, 1.6 million in total cost for an annual allocation of this staff. At this point, we're recommending proceeding with that now, using our Measure D funds. As Speaker earlier mentioned, we made a promise to the community that we were going to use Measure D to increase staffing, and we're taking that action early and quickly to get things moving. We do have additional police officers and, and non-sworn staff that will be recommended once the final report comes, comes forward. But right now, we recommend proceeding and getting ahead, head start on getting our additional staff on board and out in the community. With that, I will turn it back over to council and answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Council members, any questions or comments?
Well, I'm glad that he clarified that amount because that was a thing that I had noticed as well, that it seems to be that it should be more, just for half a year. We need to get that started right away, and giving officers the free time to patrol the streets, that's what they want to see. I recently saw some officers just waiting as well, and our residents are noticing that, so absolutely, this is something we need to do now.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Moving on to item number 19, amend and restated employment agreement between the city of Downey and Roger Bradley. That the city council adopt a resolution number 24-8286 approving and amending and restating the employment agreement between the city of Downey and Roger Bradley. City Manager Bradley, I see our human resources director, is he giving the report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James McQueen, please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you this evening is a proposed resolution amending and restating the employment agreement between the city and Mr. Roger Bradley as a city manager. As part of council's approval of this resolution, Senate Bill 1436 requires local agencies to report out certain information before changing the compensation or benefits of executive employees. Under this law, the legislative body must receive an oral report of the summary of recommended changes in the open session portion of the meeting prior to voting. Mr. Bradley was hired with the city in March 14th of 2023 and has not received an increase in salary or benefits during his time with the city. During this time period, the city's other executive staff have received a total of 8% in cost of living salary increases, with another 4% scheduled for March of 2025. Following the recent completion of Mr. Bradley's annual performance evaluation, the city council directed staff to amend his employment agreement with the following provisions: a salary increase from the current salary of $287,456 to $319,807.20. And this is to establish and maintain a 5% differential between Mr. Bradley and the highest-paid subordinate employee. Also includes a provision eliminating the current $300 per month auto allowance and replacing it with a provision allowing the employee personal use of a city vehicle. The vehicle is to be provided from the city's existing fleet. Also includes a provision increasing the severance payment from the current six months to nine months, with a provision increasing it by one additional month per year of service up to a maximum of 12 months. All other terms and conditions of employment are to remain the same as adopted in the original agreement. Approval of this item will result in additional expenditure of approximately $31,845 for the remainder of the current fiscal year. There is sufficient fund balance for these recommended actions. And this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Council, any questions, comments?
No, I move to accept this recommendation.
And I'll second.
Please vote.
Thank you. Director McQueen?
Yes, thank you.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Moving on to item 20, appoint the mayor pro tem and mayor for 2025 under the auspices of the city clerk's office, City Manager Bradley. This item is for the council to discuss the appointment of the mayor pro tem and the mayor for 2025. Do any council members have any questions or comments?
No, Mayor, I'd like to make an appointment.
Okay, I will open up the nominations for the position of mayor.
Mayor, I'd like to make the appointment for mayor.
Okay.
I don't know if it needs to be in any order, but I'd like to start with mayor. Let's go from the top down. I'd like to nominate Hector Sosa.
Actually, I'm sorry, we're going to start with mayor pro tem. Is there a motion and a second to appoint? Oh, nominations, okay, I'll start a nomination. I nominate Orasio Ortiz for mayor pro tem.
I'm going to counter that with a nomination for Dorothy Pemberton for mayor pro tem, and I'll tell you why. This council works really well together, and this is tough. Please don't take this personally, Orasio, we work well together. But you guys are the dynamic duo as you call yourselves. You guys, ever since you guys have come on board and we've become a full council, we've gotten a lot of things accomplished, we work well with each other. But if, if I were to look at both of you, Orasio and Dorothy, I think you're both very worthy of the MPT position. And, but I have to ask myself, how would I, how would I differentiate the two? Because, you know, the sad thing is, not both of you can be MPT. Whoever doesn't get it this year, I'm sure will get an opportunity next year. But if I was to differentiate the two of you, who are very worthy, I have to lean on Dorothy's decades of service to this community. So I'm going to counter Mayor Trujillo's nomination and recommend that nominate Dorothy Pemberton for MPT.
Very well, there's a substitute motion on the floor. Is there a second for the substitute motion to nominate, to nominate Dorothy Pemberton as mayor pro tem?
If I, if I can make it, I'll be happy to second that. I just, I don't take things personal. One thing I always tell people, politics is not ugly, it's just the people. And honestly, I enjoy working with all of you guys. I came into this position to really do some good for my community, and position of mayor pro tem, mayor is one of those things that, you know, it's just a title, and I know we're all here to do some good for our community, and so I'll be happy to second that motion for Dorothy.
We have a substitute motion and a second has been made for the substitute motion nominating Dorothy Pemberton as mayor pro tem.
The motion is approved unanimously.
I will now open up the nominations for the position of mayor. Is there a motion and a second? Is there a motion for mayor?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion and nominate Mayor Pro Tem Hector Sosa for mayor.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No substitute motions?
The motion is approved unanimously.
Very well. Congratulations, Downey. You have now a new mayor who will be sworn in on Thursday. You're all invited to the traditional ceremony to begin 6:30 here in the chambers. Congratulations to Hector Sosa, who will be sworn in as mayor, and to Dorothy Pemberton, who will be sworn in as mayor pro tem. We hope you will join us. In this, at this time, we will now adjourn the city council meeting in memory of Joseph Love, 32, Assistant Special Agent in Charge of the Department of Homeland Security, Immigration and Customs Enforcement, who died as a result from cancer developed after his role in the search and recovery efforts of the 9/11 World Trade Center site. And Nicholas Grego, 31, Community Service Officer for the Palm Springs Police Department, who died, who died while on duty in a tragic traffic collision on Thanksgiving Day. A moment of silence, please. Meeting is adjourned.